Good evening. Welcome to Urban Media Arts' Last Malden City Ward Forum for this election season. Once again, my name is Guillermo Hamlin and I will be your moderator this evening. We thank you for tuning in and we like to thank all the candidates for participating tonight. We feature the at-large candidates for the city of Malden. We ask you here from Urban Media Arts to please make a plan to vote on Tuesday, November the 2nd. We thank you for tuning in when you could be watching Malden High versus Everett High, but instead you're here and we greatly appreciate your attendance. In a few minutes, I will introduce the candidates participating this evening. We will start alphabetically, then alternate accordingly. Candidates will be given four minutes to start with their opening statement. And then, following that, we will begin with questions that came from a pool of entries from the Malden Chamber of Commerce, the Malden Advocate, Friends of the Felsmere Heights, the Malden High Schools, Blue and Gold, as well as our own station here, Urban Media Arts. All were reviewed and edited for time and content. Now, all the candidates will be given the same question. Even if it feels as though it may be appropriate for one candidate or the other, we feel that it is our mission to understand that you will be voting on nearly every issue presented to you. Now, each candidate following that will be given two minutes to answer those questions. Candidates may use their two minutes to either answer the question in full or they may split the time to address something that a fellow candidate might have said. While it is very important that each participant keep to their time, especially the time allotted, you know, your opening statement being for answering questions too. I will be bumping in a little bit when it comes to the spotlight feature here on Zoom to let you know that you have a few seconds' time, thirty seconds specifically. And when it's too much time, I will try my best not to abruptly interrupt you to keep the forum going. Now, we hope to get to seven questions and the time is tight, so we look forward to your cooperation to get this done. Now, UMA was formerly MATV, Malden Access Television. And Malden Access Television has been doing political forums since they've opened their doors in the early 90s. And although we've changed the name, we are still committed to connecting people and organizations as we foster the city of Malden's engagement in the political process. It is vital that all voices are heard and UMA is delighted to take the lead in making sure that that happens. Again, we thank you all for being here tonight. Oh, there we go. And we thank you again for taking the time to join us. And now, let's meet the candidates. We have Karen Hayes, Brian DeLacy, Roberto DiMarco, John Matheson, Carrie McDonald, and Craig Spatafora. And now is the portion for the opening statement. I'm gonna bring up Karen Hayes for her opening statement.
Hi, you can hear. Is that good?
Uh, I can hear you just fine. So, the opening statement is yours. Feel free to do your four minutes.
Okay, great. First of all, I wanted to actually congratulate you Guillermo. I heard you got a new job. We'll be sad to lose you, but congratulations on that. Also, I would like to thank UMA for hosting not only tonight's forum, but all of the eight wards and I think the school committee. So, that was a tremendous amount of organization, so I want to thank you for that. Also, I'd like to thank all the residents who have taken their time out of their night to watch and learn about each candidate. Knowledge is power, so thank you for that. My name is Karen Cologne Hayes and I am running for City Councilor-at-Large. Thirty years ago, my husband and I walked off the orange line and knew immediately that this was the place for us, a diverse city, close to Boston, with affordable housing and reliable public transportation bordering on an enormous green space known as the Fels. As avid hikers, we enjoy green space as well as the Malden River where we canoe and kayak as a family. I love Malden, so much so that I have dedicated the last fifteen years serving our city. Now, I'm running for office to make Malden a more inclusive, resilient, and forward-thinking. We must start acting with urgency to preserve our communities and Malden's quality of life. We have missed too many opportunities, whether it's housing, climate change, infrastructure, or education. Some of our opponents have lacked the forward-thinking required to stay ahead of these challenges. Malden will soon be receiving forty-six million dollars from the federal government as part of our American Rescue Plan with about approximately five years to spend it. This lump sum could determine our city for generations to come. Prior to working for the city, I was the Psychiatry Research Director at Beth Israel Deaconess Medical Center, where I managed large budgets and created a research team from the bottom up. I know how to get things done. With my proven track record of listening to the people, understanding the issues, and creating sustainable solutions, I will work with all stakeholders to develop a long-term plan that ensures we all rise together. By forming local coalitions, we can work on a three-pronged approach to utilizing this funding. Stabilizing the community, number one. Strategize, try, strategize how to disperse funding and then prioritize for the future. We must make sure we make the most of this one-time funding. I'm the only woman running for at-large and I'm the only candidate that has both insider and outsider perspectives when it comes to city hall operations. I know how city hall works and I can hit the ground running. Over the past nine years, I have developed close relationships with our nonprofit organizations, Malden Public Schools, and our diverse community groups. During times when budgets are tight, I will utilize our partnerships. Malden is rich in resources, but our systems are poor and I will work to bridge that gap. I am running because I want to build a more inclusive, stronger Malden where nobody is left behind. A Malden where we all raise up all voices and everyone has a seat at the table, everyone. I would be honored if you would consider giving me one of your three votes for Councilor-at-Large. Thank you and see you on November 2nd at the polls.
Thank you very much, Karen. And now, it is time for Brian DeLacy. Brian DeLacy, I'm gonna bring you up right now and I'm gonna ask you to unmute. All right, the floor is yours.
Hi, my name is Brian DeLacy. I'm running for Councilor-at-Large and I'm asking for your vote. I hope the questions, answers, and discussions that we have tonight will provide you, the viewers, with the information you need to make an informed voting decision. Outside of this forum, feel free to contact me via any of the phone or email or social media access points that I've made available. There are three simple but strong themes in my campaign. The first is democracy in action, and that's about getting things done. The second is integrity in governments, and that's doing things right. The third is working to make Malden better for all of us, and that's bringing about fairness for all. I'll provide a brief background, but first I would like to say and echo Karen's thanks for Guillermo, certainly for all the time he has spent in the past, for UMA verse for putting this together. I know the challenges of putting together a forum like this for candidates. It's fraught with complexities and scheduling challenges. I'd like to thank all the individuals who helped me in this campaign. They were all volunteers, none were paid. The donations we received, none were solicited. With that said, of course, I'd like to thank my family and especially the residents of Malden who have over the weeks that we have been out on the streets welcomed us into their neighborhoods, into conversations, and into their lives. My goals for tonight ultimately are to share more background about me with you so that you can better understand who I am and what I would bring to the council if I was fortunate enough to earn your vote. Over the years, my wife and I have, we've spent nearly three decades here. We've raised three children. They've all graduated from Malden High School. It's been a wonderful experience for us, for our family. My wife, she wrote a dissertation on interracial dating and marriage. As a mixed family, we found the diversity of Malden to be very appealing. And in the three decades that we've been here, it's only gotten better and better. Some of you may know that I did run for Ward Three Counselor in 2015 and since then, I really have not stopped participating or contributing to the community. Again, the three pillars of my campaign, which frankly were fundamentally in place back then, democracy in action, integrity in government, and working to make Malden better for all of us. As the night goes on, I hope to cover more information about the public safety, about health and well-being, about the educational systems, and I very much look forward to the discussion that takes place. Thank you for joining in.
Thank you, Brian. All right, I'm now gonna bring up Roberto DiMarco for his opening statement. Uh, ask you to unmute. There you are.
Hello. First, I wish, hi Guillermo. First, I wish to thank UMA, Guillermo, Ron Cox, and, and the other organizers tonight's forum. Thank you for allowing this elections candidates to present themselves to the voters. I also want to thank my fellow candidates for their time and efforts during the campaign. It's inspiring to witness the sheer amount of civic engagement that has taken place during this election season. I hope it's just the beginning and that our residents continue to participate and voice their positions in coming months and years. Engagement is the lifeblood of any democracy and without it, we risk stagnation and deterioration of society. So, to all watching tonight and to anyone that you know, please remain engaged. Make your voices heard. Run for office. Seek appointments. Volunteer where time and resources allow. Be involved. I am Roberto DiMarco and I am seeking your vote for City Council-at-Large. I have watched this city with pride as it has grown and flourished. Our city cherishes rich diversity. We're devoted to social justice and have a growing civic engagement. We benefit from redevelopment and outside investment while holding strong to our proud past and identity. But we also need to remember that these gains have not been realized by all. Many have been left out of Malden's prosperity. We cannot forget that we have an obligation to support and aid our neighbors who have not benefited. My first goal as council will be to listen and to hear from those who feel forgotten and left out. As I traveled the city during the election season, I have heard the concerns of residents and I commit myself to addressing these issues. We need to address the concerns of seniors who see rising prices and costs as a threat to their retirement. We need to address the concerns of small businesses that see rising employment costs, restricting, restricted inventory, and increased competition from online commerce. We need to address the concerns of our environment and deal with destructive flooding in our neighborhoods, reduced green space, and the increasing cost to our residents and businesses from periods of extreme heat and other severe weather. We need to address the concerns of working-class families who feel priced out of Malden, unable to find affordable housing where they can raise their children. We need to address deferred maintenance, repair roads, sidewalks, replace lead pipes, provide open space for residents. We need to deal with the concerns in our, with those in our community who feel marginalized, concerned about their own safety due to their identity, who they love, how they worship, and what they look like. We need to address the concerns of families dealing with mental health crises. These include families and residents struggling with addiction, their own and their loved ones. We have seen the failure of the city of Boston to address fallout from the closure of Long Island Bridge that was a lifeline for rediction and recovery resources in the current humanitarian crisis that mass encasped. For Malden, this will be an important area of growth and collaboration and we are now able to tap federal redevelopment opportunities to target much-needed expanded services in these areas. And we need to keep in mind that as public servants, we answer to the people. I have raised four children in this city. I have grown up. I have been educated here and I wish to serve the city. I've spent my life, my professional life, as a advocate for its residents. I hope you'll consider me for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now, we're gonna bring up John Matheson. All right, John Matheson, opening statement is yours.
Well, thank you. Hi, everybody. Thanks for joining us here this evening and thank you to Urban Media Arts and Guillermo for hosting us. My name is John Matheson. I am seeking one of your three votes for Councilor-at-Large next Tuesday. By way of background, I was born and raised here in Malden. I attended the Malden Public Schools. I also work here in Malden. For the past twelve years, I have run my law office in Malden Square. My fiance, Ingrid, and I, we met each other in 2009 while serving Thanksgiving meals with the Bread of Life. I went on to serve as president of that organization while they were moving from a rental property and purchasing a new home and growing and expanding to serve one million meals a year to those in need. I also served in the city council for nine years, at-large, Ward Three, and as council president. I gave up that seat in order to run for mayor and I'm proud that we were the choice of forty percent of the voters in Malden in 2019. And we gave the people a big race in which to bring their issues. I understand other candidates when they say, "Let's elect a new person, a new voice." When I was new, I said the same thing. I see things differently this time around. We have four vacant seats in the city council. That's over a third of the council. With that in mind, I see experience as being very important. I'll be a source of experience and stability on the council that we're gonna need in this term to come. And over my time in the council, we accomplished quite a bit. For example, we built a new police station on time and on budget, I'm proud to say, a new city hall with ten million dollars of state funding. We reopened Pleasant Street, linking the square with the T Station. We improved our bond rating, making it less expensive to borrow. We added energy-efficient upgrades to all city property, including the schools, the parks, the streetlights. I'm proud to say Felsmere Pond in my ward received the first upgrade. We also added some affordable housing policies, including inclusionary zoning and an affordable housing trust fund and some creative new housing options. Waste and recycling program got some attention in 2019 as well. And over the many years that I've been in the council, we replaced a lot of new roads, miles of new roads, miles of new water pipes, hundreds of lead service lines into people's homes were replaced. I helped create some new city services too, including a new tree planting and beautification program through Tree City USA, a local disability commission, and our first historic district study committee. You can also see the downtown starting to come alive again. This isn't the result of one thing or any one person, but through a lot of hard work and collaboration over many, many years. I'm proud of these things. I want to continue this work. That's why I'm running. Thank you for listening and thank you for considering me for your valuable vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, we're gonna bring up Carrie McDonald for his opening statement. All right, the floor is yours.
Thanks Guillermo. I'm Carrie McDonald, candidate for Malden City Council-at-Large, and it is so good to be with you all tonight in this final week of the campaign. During the COVID-19 pandemic, being a part of this diverse and supportive community has meant everything to me and my family. I've seen neighbors pull together and help each other out, volunteering, advocating, supporting each other. You know, more recently, I've been able to go with my kids to fall festivals, outdoor gatherings, PTO events that bring people together. I want to see those connections continue and grow across all of our neighborhoods. This election comes at a critical point as the pandemic hopefully is fading. We will have to face the question of whether we can continue the spirit of innovation and compassion that we've shown, like our partnerships with community organizations and accessible online meetings. Can we address the crises and challenges our community faces from mental health and substance abuse to rising natural disasters? In this campaign, I've knocked on thousands of doors. I've canvassed in every ward and every precinct in the city. I've talked with thousands of voters and I've heard a few consistent things. The call for better basic city services, for more communication and access to decisions at the city level, and the courage to face issues that affect us all, like climate change, soaring prices, and how much our neighbors love the city too. Hopefully, you've had a chance to learn a little bit about me at this point. I will raise our family in the Faulkner neighborhood. I have a first grader at Forestale, a preschooler at my little best friend's early learning center. Professionally, I am a nonprofit executive at a national church organization called the Unitarian Universalist Association. As executive vice president there, I oversee the day-to-day operations and strategic planning for our hundreds of staff and volunteers and our thirty-million-dollar operating budget. Before my nonprofit work, I was a state budget and policy analyst focused on education. My degree is for economics and management. I'm an active community volunteer and a member of First Parish Church. So, my experience gives me the skills to work hard for our city, starting on day one. And as a first-time candidate, I do bring a fresh perspective to the city's challenges and opportunities. As a Councilor-at-Large, I've focused on three things: getting the basics right, empowering community voices, and taking action on citywide issues that affect everyone. First, those basics are the foundation for doing any job well. It means paving our streets. The backlog of street repair is the number-one thing we hear from voters, so we need a clear plan to address it systematically, consistently. That also means keeping our parks in good shape, picking up trash and recycling, maintaining sidewalks and crosswalks, and removing lead pipes. All important for safety, accessibility, and quality of life. Second, empowering community voices means including people from every neighborhood and every background in our decisions. We need to make it easy for people from every part of our diverse community to have a seat at the table. That means accessible public planning, continuing virtual meetings, a citywide standard for language interpretation and translation, and know that racial justice and equity and inclusion are at the heart of my campaign. And third, we have to take action on citywide issues that affect all of us. A climate action plan is an urgent need for this city because we are at risk for storm surge flooding, severe rain, runoff air quality, heat island effects. A climate action plan like many of our neighboring cities have would include plans for green space, energy efficiency, climate resiliency projects, and it can't wait. There are other issues we also need to address: the cost of housing, our community health and safety, and education and economic opportunity. I decided to run for office because I love this city. COVID-19 has shown us how much we need each other because it's so easy to be isolated. It's also shown us what's possible when we come together. We want this to be an inclusive, dynamic, imaginative community where people can afford to raise a family, buy a house, and grow old in a place where anyone can get a great education, launch a career, and start a business, where parks, libraries, and community events bring people together, and where everyone, no matter who you are, can be safe and get help when you're in crisis. I ask for one of your at-large votes on November 2nd for Carrie McDonald for Malden City Council. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Carrie. And now, we're gonna bring up Craig Spatafora. Hello, Mr. Spatafora. The floor is yours. Let me ask you to unmute. There you go. The floor is yours.
Hey, thank you Guillermo. First, I want to echo my fellow candidates and thanking Malden Access UMA for this platform. Certainly, great to do it virtually, but I, I, I would love to be in person, like several of the other debates. I just feel the energy from the crowd and I think it helps all candidates sometimes when you stand in front of your supporters and face your opponents, your comrades, and your friends in a, in a real setting. So, I do still appreciate this virtual setting. Second, before I begin, I do want to wish my son a happy fourteenth birthday. I'm sure he can think of other things he'd rather be doing right now than watching me on this tape, but happy birthday to Mariano. My name's Craig Spatafora. I'm a City Councilor-at-Large. I've been born, educated, and raised in the city of Malden. I have three children and I'm married to Debbie Spatafora, who's also a nurse for the city of Malden. My roots certainly run deep in the city and have seen many changes, some good, some bad. But I personally believe Malden is alive and well. It is an honor to sit before all of you today, watching on Facebook Live or on YouTube or in tape in a few hours or days ahead. For those of you watching online, I'm sure there's other temptations right now you'd rather be doing. Like mentioned earlier, there's a baseball game going on and a basketball game, but thank you for taking time out of your busy lives for doing something important and learning about the candidates. We come together this time of year to reflect on our new leaders and reflect on the past. When I stood before you two years ago at the last election, I planted the seeds for moving Malden forward. In the months that had shored from then, we've had been challenged with a pandemic, but Malden was still able to raise the bar for housing initiatives, green space, infrastructure improvement, energy efficiency, public safety, transparency, and thoughtfulness as we developed a package that addressed the needs of the city and our people in 2021 and beyond. Are we done? Absolutely not. But this is a journey. It is not a direct line. There's a lot of turns and sometimes dead ends. But the city of Malden over the last ten years has made great strides in many of these areas. And I can proudly say that as a Councilor-at-Large, I delivered many of these initiatives along with my fellow counselors. As that process from transition from being a campaign promise, I and several council members continue the transition of a strong partnership that has been the hallmark of the city's progress the last decade. Throughout my time as a counselor, I've viewed many priorities. And my priorities are our priorities really go into four categories: its core services, its quality of life, fiscal responsibility, and incorporating transparency into our decision-making process. I want to recognize the great team we have at city hall and the city departments that made that all possible. Regardless of what we do as counselors, the real work goes into the full-time employees, from the teachers to the firemen, to the policemen, to the DPW directors. That work not only tirelessly day after day, they did not have the opportunity during COVID to work remote. They maintained our parks. They picked up our trash. They brought us water. They fixed and repaired our streets. They maintain our plans and our codes to keep the city on track and livable. And they also run towards fire. They run towards crime and emergencies so we can stay safe. So, I want to thank them for their everyday battle. There is no doubt many aspects of Malden life's improving daily that I could highlight today. Time just does not allow it, but it is a special thing to live in a city where good news seems to come through the door almost every day. I never take for granted these improvements to our quality of life and I'm heartened to think that along with hard-working employees of the city of Malden and its citizen, it's ensured to continue rolling for the next few years. The past year has also shown us evidence that our capacity for love is little, is stronger here in Malden. We certainly already knew the incredible work that dozens of nonprofits and churches do in the city, but it really was highlighted during the pandemic. I love seeing how we took, we took care of each other. We loved, I love seeing how citizens found new ways to help their neighbors and even outside entities delivered not only goods and services, but also donations to help us. I would submit to you as a comment.
I have to interrupt the time. So sorry, but thank you for that. And now, we're gonna proceed to the question portion of our forum. There'll be plenty of time to expand on that, so we're gonna start with question one. And pay attention because we're gonna switch things up. Over the past few weeks during these forums, several questions have been submitted from various groups. However, we at station were curious. What question would you like to ask all of the candidates? And what would your answer be to your question? Now, let me repeat that again. We are expecting you to ask a question that you would like to ask to everybody, all your fellow candidates, and you yourself will answer said question. Now, as we mull that over, I'm gonna bring over Brian DeLacy. Hello there, Brian. Would you need me to repeat the question?
No, I think I have it Guillermo. I'll do my best. It's, it's great to be creative and innovative and, and shake things up a little bit. I guess the question that I would like to ask and answer is, what is the most interesting thing that the candidates assembled tonight have seen in their visits to the wards around the city? And what is the most compelling story or the most compelling individual? Or the, what, what did they learn that they were unaware of before? So, so that's my question. And, and the way I'll answer it is this. We have touch base in all of the wards in the city and we certainly haven't knocked all of the doors that we'd like to. But in every ward in the city, we bump into people typically on the street. And typically, we hear moving stories that have... And typically, we hear moving stories that have impacted their lives. I spoke with a woman today who is a senior, who is taking care of her even older disabled sister. They've lived in the city for somewhere in the vicinity of 40 years. And it was very, very, very eye-opening to see what was important to her and what services she has frankly tried hard to advocate for and come up short. Certainly the highlight in terms of the person who I met was a 96-year-old veteran who stormed the beaches on Normandy at D-Day, and really it's been life-changing for me. So those are the great stories. That is the best part about campaigning. These are real people who have real needs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I'm going to see what best I can do to repeat that question, which is what have you learned from canvassing the city of Malden and what stories do you have to share? So I'm going to go ahead and remove Brian DeLacy, and I'm going to bring up Roberto DeMarco. If you can find him, Roberto DeMarco. There you are. I'm going to bring you up. And now you have the option of partially answering that question or submitting one of your own and answering accordingly. And the floor is yours to answer your two-minute question.
So, quick question. I asked my own question, or will I do that again later?
You get to ask your own question. You get to ask your own question.
I get to ask my own question. Question I would ask each of the candidates is how would you capitalize, improve, use private government collaborations to improve the lives of the residents around you? I have been spending the last 20 years working on exactly that. I have brought to the table changes with the help of the city council in our housing developments here in Malden. I have brought to the table an end to improper enforcement of actions where the city of Malden was harming its residents by enforcing rules that caused people to lose their homes. I have brought businesses into Malden that sought to redevelop old brownfields and to create new opportunities. So we as city councilors, should I be given that honor? Our job is to improve lives by leveraging the powers that we have, the tax monies we have, the directive of our citizens and residents to create more opportunities and to ease the lives of our residents. We do that by using the resources available to us. Tax money can only go so far. So we need to find different methods of leveraging those opportunities. And to do that, we need to attract new businesses and to leverage the ones that are here. We lost a lot of opportunities with all the development that went on downtown. We lost a lot of opportunities to create better Malden for all of us. And I think that it's time to go forward on a plan for how that can occur for all of us. Thank you.
Much, and just to clarify, you asked how would you use private government and other means to mutually invest together?
That's correct.
Awesome. And to clarify, I'm going to go ahead and bring up the other council candidate. As I stated earlier, you could use part of your question, sorry, you can use part of your answer to address another candidate's question, but you don't need to. We want you to be able to exercise your full two minutes, but again, you have the option. Now I'm going to bring up John Matheson. Once he's, there you go, I'm going to bring him up. Awesome. All right. So would you need me to repeat the question, or are you aware of the prompt?
I think, EMO, correct me if I'm wrong, that this would be a question I would pose to the other candidates, and then I would proceed to answer that question for myself.
That is correct.
Okay. So I really liked Brian DeLacy's question about, you know, what have you learned from talking with the residents out there? And I got to tell you, I learned so much from the seniors that I speak with. You know, they've been around longer than I have, and they've got a lot of wisdom that I can tap into. And it's really shaped my life over the last decade of public service. The question I would ask, because it's what's foremost on their minds, is how would you improve safety in the city of Malden? And I could tell you what the seniors would say. You know, for one thing, the traffic is really a source of angst for them. It continues to grow. And of course, you know, with the turmoil that we've seen around the country in the past year, we want to see our public safety fully funded, the police, the fire. It's extremely important, and I really appreciated how Councilor Spatafora gave a shout-out to the city employees that have really done yeoman's work, keeping us safe here in Malden, and frankly, working hard and very often thanklessly. So I would say fully funding public safety and taking on traffic mitigation measures such as signal timing, taking measures to keep traffic from during peak hours, going on to our residential neighborhoods, which jeopardize those family neighborhoods where your kids play, and obviously scaring the seniors in their areas. I was proud that during my time, we instituted Drive 25 here in Malden, and we put the first signs up in Ward 3 on Glenwood Street where we desperately needed it. I think that helps. We had the deadly intersection of Felswee East and Highland Ave, and I was able, even though that had been a problem for 40, 50 years, that councilors and others had been trying to work on. I was able to get DCR to come to the table, meet with the community. I hosted a series of forums.
I'm so sorry.
That's fine.
Of course, of course. I'm now going to bring up Carrie McDonald. Same prompt, same question. All right, the floor is yours unless you need me to repeat the prompt.
I understand the prompt. So the question that I would like to see us all ask is, what is the hardest question you've been asked by a voter? And the hardest question I've been asked by a voter is somebody, I was at their door, I was talking to them, I gave them my spiel, you know, we were in conversation, and they said, you know, I like you, but why should I believe that things can really change or can be different in this community? And it just tugged at my heart because I'm in this to help improve people's lives. I mean, that's what I've dedicated my life and my time to since I was in high school. All of my professional experiences have been about trying to make the community a better place. And so to encounter the hopelessness that sometimes our neighbors have hurts. And in my campaign, we've reached out to people who haven't always been engaged because they don't think that their vote can matter. But that's not what I believe. I see how many strengths we have in Malden. I see that we face big challenges. People who are in crisis, our community at risk, but there's such courage and creativity present. You know, people ask me about big, impossible dynamics. It seems like gentrification and displacement, and what can we do? Well, I don't know the answer to all of those things, but I know that we can do more. And I say that you can always know that I will be reachable. You can reach out to me. I will tell you what I think. I will tell you what I think to be true, and I will work as hard as I can on your behalf. And that's what we can do is the next thing to help make our community a better place and build that trust with our voters across the city. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm now going to bring up Craig Spatafora for the same prompt. All right, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Gamo. I think I understand the question. My question would be, because I think all the councilors and all the candidates face the same question, is how do you balance growth for the new city, affordability, and green space? And the reason why I ask that question is because those are all buzzwords that are certainly important in the city of Malden. We've done study after study in knocking on doors. Certainly, Malden has become less affordable. But most of the residents that I've also knocked doors on also want to see us increase green space and passive recreation. And those two things counterbalance each other. Third on that list would be traffic, but I think that's just a counterparty of increasing density. The reason why I say that I would be the candidate to tell you right now, I believe the city has to incentivize no more residential building in the city of Malden. And what I mean by residential building, you have to do ownership. If we're going to allow somebody to build, a private individual to build it, it should be ownership. We did pass the affordability inclusion, inclusionary zoning, so that will mandate anything over 10 units, there has to be affordability. But more importantly, I think a lot of these properties that are in the city, instead of tearing them down and losing the character and the architectural, we should allow the city to change the zoning ordinances to allow that to turn into residential, and more importantly, ownership. And having a component there not just for affordability, but our veterans. It's all too often that I've talked to many residents that say, we need more housing for veterans. And finally, we should take some of our Community Preservation Act money and gear it towards buying small pockets of either private-owned land and turning that into green space. I think it's very important, and I think that's the challenge going in the city of Malden. There's not too much land left in the city. Thank you, Gamo.
Thank you very much. And now I'm going to bring up Karen Hayes. Before we go on to question two, this is the last part of question one. Hello there, Karen. The floor is yours.
Hi. So it's fun to be last because I was writing all of these notes about, because I think you said we could answer one of their questions.
That is correct. That is correct, but you would be cutting into your own time.
Okay. So I think it would handle both. So I wanted to address something that John Matheson said, and it was about safety. But safety for seniors, I think he said. So I would, my question also would be, what does safety mean for seniors? So something that I saw on the doors, I spent a lot of time with our seniors, and safety not only means, you know, physical safety, right? But also to keep, like, I heard a lot about mental health issues, feeling disconnected from our community. And I wanted to bring up a time where I met actually at one of our senior homes where I heard something that really stayed with me for a while. But we talked about a lot of seniors who were really worried and concerned about the healthcare and Medicare advantage and how the changes could possibly be coming by being cut from the federal government, and that they were really concerned. Right now, they're budgeting, they're budgeting and sometimes not taking medicines that are prescribed to them because they can't afford them, or they're having to choose between eating, paying their rent, or taking their medicine. So that hit me so hard that I started to already scramble and find some answers to that. So I met with Catherine Clark's office with people who are working on that and brought the seniors together so that they can get answers to that because they felt unsafe, they felt they could be homeless, how am I going to make these choices? So that would be another part that I would add to that.
Thank you. We're going to proceed with the second question. Thank you, Karen. All right, so now we're going to proceed with the second question. Please pay attention, but please keep in mind I will repeat it if you ask. How can the city of Malden be of more assistance to small businesses and within the small business community, given the makeup of Malden, immigrant-owned and minority-owned small businesses? I'm going to proceed to bring over Roberto DeMarco. Hello, Roberto DeMarco. Do you need me to repeat the question, or do you got it?
Oh, I have it. So starting a business, as I've stated many times, is the second-largest investment for many, many people. Home, buying a home, and you get that opportunity is the first. Starting a business can be one of the most nerve-wracking, excuse me, one of the most nerve-wracking choices that you can make. The issue is how do you train and educate individuals on the needs for a small business startup? You attract individuals, you teach individuals by a city, continuing, having a process of seminars, education, inviting in professionals who know how to get this done. If you don't have the right education, then you're not going to be able to answer the issues that arise in small business. I've run a small business for the last 18 years, 19 at this point. I grew up in small business. I saw my immigrant father come to this country and start a small business with $300 in his pocket. And somehow, at the end of the day, he educated four children in college in private high schools. How did he do that? Because he kept an open mind and he had the assistance of family members. He had the assistance of the city around him. He had the assistance of education. As a city, if we're able to bring in professionals to offer seminars, if we're able to bring in financing opportunities through the current department that used to be the MRA, these are ways in which we can assist those immigrants and new business owners on developing, and not just regular small businesses, also micro businesses, home businesses. We need to change the zoning to allow for easier access to opportunities to start these small businesses. We need to change the method by which we finance and tax small businesses that are in the home.
So sorry, we have to proceed, but thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Get out that note, of course. And now we're going to bring in John Matheson. All right, John, do you need me to repeat the question, or do you got it?
I believe the question was, how can we promote small businesses in the city of Malden, including minority-owned businesses?
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay. Well, stop my clock, EMO. I would say that Malden is perfectly poised to be a thriving business district, the best thriving business district in the metro north area of Boston. We just need to get the word out. We are bookended by Route 1 and I-93, huge corridors in this state. And throughout this city, we've got different routes, such as Route 28 and Route 60. What we need to do is let people know that we are here and we are open for business. You look at this Bank of America building down in the square and the rehab they've done with their glass facade, which is kitty corner to the T, and it is beautiful. And then you look at the National Grid site, which has to be capped to be used, but it can be used for commercial businesses, can't be used for residents. And that is just a prime location. Several years ago, when we were moving City Hall, we realized that acreage in Malden was worth about $1 million an acre, and I'm sure it's far north of that now. We just need to let the business community know that we're here, and then we need to work with those individuals to come in. I remember when we brought in a business, the bakery there from Medford, and we gave them a tax incentive. Someone wants to come in and build a site and be here to stay and employ our residents, maybe there's a way that we could step up their tax over time. So that as they get their foothold and they make their expenditures, they're starting to absorb taxes until they're finally ramped up to 100% tax rate. I think that that step-up's a wonderful way to do it. Thank you, Gamo.
Thank you. And now I'm going to bring up Carrie McDonald with the same prompt, the same question. All right, Carrie. The floor is yours.
Thanks. This is such an opportunity we have right now in Malden to create access to wealth in this community for people who haven't had it before, who've been systematically excluded. I have met these creative folks and entrepreneurs who are right now in our community, starting new businesses out of their homes. They're often selling online, which is way easier to get something started than dealing with brick and mortar. And there's lots of ways we can make that easier. Boston is making it easier, for example, to get certified in food-based businesses out of your own home. We talked about this at the G-Mac Forum earlier, and I want to bring it up again. We need a small business incubator in Malden. And that's, yes, services, wraparound, access to financing and coaching and marketing and business planning. And it's also shared space that you have access to, which is incredibly important if you don't have a brick-and-mortar location, sometimes commercial kitchens or packing rooms. And then if we have that kind of a partnership, we can create cohorts that focus on entrepreneurs who've been traditionally underserved, Black, Indigenous, and people of color, disabled folks, immigrants, and the services they need to support one another in bringing their businesses and growing their businesses. This is something that exists in cities like Somerville and Boston. It can be financed as well with public-private partnerships, yes, grants, private support. There's an incredible number of partnerships possible through maker spaces and libraries. So that kind of a focused investment is, really feels like a once-in-a-generation opportunity to focus on the creative, the food-based, the culture-based businesses that are already starting in our community. If we can just be the wing, the wind underneath their wings.
Thank you very much, Carrie. I'm gonna proceed to bring up Craig Spatafora, same question. Alright, Craig Spatafora, the floor is yours.
Thanks, Gamo, great question, and I think there's a lot the city can certainly do to help small businesses in the city. I would say Malden Square is, I think, a great canvas for a lot of small businesses. We've had a lot of Asian owners come to the city of Malden, a lot have gone towards the rest of the community. But, but certainly I think it's alive, I don't think it's thriving, but I think it's alive. We all know that locally owned businesses play a certain role in a healthy community and certainly the best engine that cities and towns can have about advancing economic opportunity. And it's been a pathway for a lot of the middle class for generations and continue to be crucial for wealth building and certainly community self determination. My family, as probably many of yous know, have several small businesses i- in this community and started in the early nineteen hundreds. Several are still here, unfortunately several are not there. Some things that we can certainly do, we do have the Strategic Office in planning right now, which is the old MRA, they've certainly done that. But I would say zoning is number one, the ability to have small businesses in neighborhoods. That's maybe less parking requirements, but zoning would be key for that. And that also comes into the home, homeownership. I would also say helping with the app that the facilitating the space, not even just zoning, but certain buildings in the square, we can work with the MRA to get, to get Main Street space so those small businesses can get foot traffic. I also think capital is key, no matter what anybody says, certainly location, location is very important, like Council Matheson said, but it does take capital. Work with many of the local community banks as well as the MRA, excuse me, Strategic Office. And get that capital to the minorities and immigrants to help them foresee that. And then I would say finally, is look at TIFs, TIFs are tax, tax, and, and, oh my god. Tax increment assessments, and what they do, TIFs, it allows you to work with the state and the city. It's a state and city program to lower the taxes. A lot of times, larger businesses that have been in existence for a couple of years use this, but that is another tool we have. Hoff's Bakery, family owned, certainly not small now, but located on Green Street, moved from Medford, they, they manufactured pastries and desserts. It was a big win for the city of Malden to get to, to have them come in here, they, they employ over a hundred and fifty employees and about fifty Malden residents, so that's what I would do.
Thank you, I'm so sorry to bother you.
No worries.
I'm now gonna bring up Karen Hayes with the same question.
Okay. Hi, Gamo.
Hello there.
Hi.
Yours.
Thank you, could I just ask a quick favor if you could, it's Cologne, Karen Cologne Hayes. Thank you, okay. So, you know, stimulating our economy is absolutely essential. As city councilor, I'll prioritize supporting our local homegrown small businesses from providing low interest rate loans to pay for rent and inventory, but also to incentivize person jobs that offer more hours and higher wages. You know, Malden runs on family owned businesses and during the summer, the summer festivals that were put on by the mayor's office and Kevin Duffy, they were fantastic, I mean, that gave me a chance to, I went from booth to booth, meeting all the new small businesses every weekend. Actually, ended up making relationships with them and we've done a couple of, you know, activities and events since then. So I would like to see that expanded throughout Malden's other squares, we shouldn't just be focusing on downtown. The CARES Act funding did provide some relief for small businesses, but it wasn't enough. And it was a lot of the PPE, I know my husband has a small business and that was really hard to navigate through. So what I would like to see is to have, to partner with agencies that do that. I've been actually jumping on some forums for the Commonwealth Corporation, actually had some about how to help small businesses and they had really good free advice and you can call them, you can contact them, you can jump on, you know, to their, their forums. And also just have, you know, be able to give that kind of information out to our, the people here in Malden. Hold those kind of services and maybe create a career place center, that's something that I've really thought about for a long time. That would help both people looking for jobs and small businesses. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That question was answered by Karen Cologne Hayes, and now we're gonna bring up Brian DeLacy. Alright, Brian.
Yeah, great, thank you, Gamo, for that, for that question, and it's kind of great to come at the end of a long line of really great ideas on how the city could move to a whole new level in this particular area of business. The, this is something that is near and dear to my heart. For, for one of the greatest courses I took at business school was in entrepreneurship. I was very privileged to, to take a class with one of the preeminent authors in the realm of entrepreneurship. And subsequently, in work that I did in higher education and business administration, I interviewed dozens and dozens of entrepreneurs and startups, everything from home businesses to venture funded businesses to private equity buyout businesses, to companies that went public businesses, to companies that went bust businesses. And so I really think the opportunity is tremendous. I similarly pushed the National Grid site earlier, the location is prime, it's good to see that there is essentially an innovation center that is coming online down there now. Outreach to our neighbors, our communities, and frankly, you know, beyond would be great. City Hall, use the resources we have, the library, expand the resources we have, which would have the added benefit of expanding the hours for public residential use as well. So I'd just say, bring it on and we can really, you know, move this to a whole new level, thank you.
Thank you very much, and now we're gonna proceed with the third question. Now, this question is a result of some controversy. There has been that controversy generated from the Charter School, known as the Mystic Valley Regional Charter School System, in wanting to expand further, develop further into the Maplewood section of the city of Malden. What are your thoughts on this issue? And how would you address any action that the city council would take on this issue? I'm gonna go ahead and bring John Matheson back to answer this question. Proceed with that. Alright, Mr. Matheson, the question, Mystic Valley Regional Charter School is expanding, what are you gonna do?
Well, first, Gamo, this is a purchase of private property and obviously that's, that's not something we can prevent or control. But there are possibilities there. Obviously, we don't want to lose our small squares, I think that Maplewood Square in particular is just a beautiful place after Malden Square. It's one of the most well developed over there and I want to see it thrive even better. When, when a school takes over a space like that, we lose tax revenue, we lose shopping options. I know that the Charter School has floated ideas there to work with the city that would release that property to go back to other higher and better uses. But again, the Charter School is expanding because of the great work it's done. I think the students that were most at risk around the country, we saw them thrive under the Charter School system. Increased graduation rates and college enrollment rates, particularly among the most threatened populations. So I applaud them for that work, but at the same time, we support the city and their endeavor and the community and their needs for, for that community over there in Maplewood Square. I don't know the answer there as far as what we're gonna do with the Charter School, I think that this is a very new issue. And it's gonna be evolving, and I think the city council is gonna have some involvement in that in the future. So I don't want to speak out of school by going too early onto this, it's, it's actually still a new issue that's developing.
Thank you very much. And now we're gonna proceed with Carrie McDonald with the same question.
This is an issue that I hear consistently from folks who live anywhere near Maplewood Square, is what is going on with this property purchase? And so I think it's something we have to take very seriously. I was at the community meeting that was at Salem Wood School when this first got made public. And I heard the serious concerns from dozens and dozens of residents about losing their homes, losing their businesses. And of course, the rising traffic from people coming from half a dozen other cities and towns for drop off. So what seems to me to be the most important is that the community and the neighborhood really does get to be a part of the decision making in this, like they would be for any other large community project. And they get to address abatement issues and challenges that development might create. So I support the direction that the city council has already been going in strengthening neighborhood associations. And I would just urge the Mystic Valley leadership to not just put out more ads proclaiming their partnership, but actually act in partnership. Show good faith in partnership with the neighborhood there, because I think that's what people are asking for. I think that's totally fair and reasonable to expect.
Thank you very much. And now I'm gonna bring up Craig Spatafora with the same question.
Yeah.
Alright, same question, I understand that you're currently on the city council, so we'll keep that in mind.
Yes, I attended the meeting too, I attended virtually. I would echo, I think, with some of the fellow candidates in, well, I guess they're not councillors, but I would, I would agree. I think the process was, was probably broken from the beginning, I've certainly heard from many residents there of losing their identity in the square. And it's really a quality life issue, the traffic there, like most any school, but certainly that school because of the amount of students that go from other cities is overwhelming. I think it would be very hard for the, for me to support building a new school and that development just because it would be really try to fit a large project in such a small footprint. It doesn't only affect the square, it's really gonna affect the other side of the, of the street, which was Columbia Street. I do want to call attention to the fact that I've heard from many residents say, how does this happen, how did the city council did not know? The city council had no idea what was gonna happen because it was a private transaction, which Attorney DiMarco said. There was no public bidding process needed based on the state rules. So the first thing I would say is, I think we need to contact our state delegation, which I have, and said they should have the same bidding requirements like all other city entities have to have. Because if the city of Malden wanted to do that, they are required to do a bidding process. However, the Charter School, not just that Charter School, particular Charter Schools that were started before the rules changed are allowed not to do any bidding process. So there is a fundamental problem there, and that's at the state level. The second thing is, I agree that the residents should have a say in this, and I know Council Winslow brought a paper forward and ordinance, which I do support in terms of putting oversight on, not only just schools. And you gotta remember, it's more than a charter school, we have other schools in the community, as well as churches. Because there's a lot of places of worship that have same issues too, in terms of as they grow, and it's great to have houses of worship grow, they bring the same type of density and traffic issue. So I think this is something where all the residents should have a say in any building project in the neighborhood.
Thank you very much, and now we're gonna bring up Karen Cologne Hayes with the same question. Alright, Karen, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you, I'm so glad this question came up. It was the number one issue and we were knocking doors over in Ward Six. So I think sometimes, like, so go back to planning, right, I'm a big planner. I think that a lot of this could have been, we could have probably not had the big surprise that everybody had if we talked and spoke and built a relationship with Mystic Valley Charter School. I have to say that I'm, I have no problem with, with people having choice for school, it has nothing to do with the school. My kids needed to go somewhere else, I would absolutely put them there, but I think that we need to bridge and make, we have to have a better relationship with the Charter School so that we are not caught off guard. And we could have talked about that, having like, bringing them in with us for a master plan and in all our areas, so that we would be coming together and working on this, you know, together. I was also at the community meetings and I was at a committee meeting at City Hall where I think it was, it was Councillor Di Maria and Councillor Winslow who put together a committee to address just this. So I'm really happy that that happened, that the residents, who, their quality of life regarding traffic and having this expansion and the whole look of the area where they grew up in is going to be changed. So they need a place to bring all that information to. And I think though, that just moving forward, we have got to have a better working relationship so that these things don't happen in the future.
Thank you very much. And now we're gonna bring up Brian DeLacy with the same question.
Alright, Brian. Thanks, Gamo, very important question and raises a lot of important topics. As a background, people should know who are viewing this, that a member of the Board of Trustees of the Charter School also is a high ranking titled member of an important committee on the city. So there's an interlocking of responsibilities that presents some interesting potentially conflicted areas and realms. The other thing that's important to point out is that this announcement took place nearly at the very end of June. And as people are aware, the city council goes on summer recess for a couple of months. So the timing was perfect, basically, for the council to have left without accomplishing anything or focusing on this. Thankfully, myself and another individual had, sometime before this, set up a social media site related to the accountability of the Charter School in the city of Malden. And around a hundred people very quickly chimed in with their opinions and their thoughts and the ready made views of what was happening. We did a survey, we did a, local businesses collected petition signatures. We individually personally lobbied in a very proactive way. Certain councillors, particularly Councillor Di Maria was fabulous in responding. And as we know, that is what precipitated the discussion at the very last council meeting before summer recess. Councillor Di Maria established a summer recess special meeting, the Salem Wood meeting that people have referred to here, and more has unfolded. I think the key message here is that we can't wait, we can't just talk, we have to act. And that really is what democracy in action is all about, thank you.
Thank you. And now we're gonna bring out Roberto DiMarco. Alright, Roberto, same question.
Thank you. First, I, this is very personal to me, I represent several of the businesses that are being impacted by this. Second, we have law that prevents a concerted effort. And unfortunately, much of the paper that has been brought forward on this by Councillor Winslow can't happen, the Dover Amendment prevents much of what is being attempted to do. So we need to think not in terms of simple platitudes and simple demonstrations, we need to think creatively on methods that we can save these businesses, that we can interact. The Charter School made its decision, it did not seek partnership. But we can try to push partnership with them, force partnership if necessary with them to begin collaborating with the city. Other high schools in, in, in Malden are engaging in all types of ways. We can get the Charter School to do that, once they become an engaged partner, we can try to moderate or, or, or ameliorate the, the effects of this. There are ways, like Council Spatafora has said, like Attorney Matheson has said, like Karen has said. These are methods by which we can engage in partnership and try to fix what's happening. But it's not gonna be easy, and the law unfortunately is against us. But there are methods of, of mediation, of forcing discussion that can help to alleviate the situation. The Dover Act, the Dover Amendment is incredibly powerful and it will stop much of what we try to force. So force isn't gonna work, except force of mediation and partnership. Let's engage, let's try to address what the Charter School is trying to do with a different proposal. And I, I don't have a full answer, I'm not sure anybody really does at this point. But we're gonna have to try to move more towards cooperation and collaboration, even if it's gonna be a forced one. Even if we can't win a lawsuit with the Charter School, at least we can force the cost of fighting with us to a high enough degree where they'll want to sit down. That would be my first approach, there are plenty of businesses that need to be saved in that area.
Of course, thank you. Alright, now we're gonna proceed with another question. Now, I apologize, this is continued, we will proceed with another land question. So let's pay attention, because it's very important, so Laura Howie, the Executive Director for Communications at the Melrose Wakefield Healthcare, at Melrose Wakefield Healthcare. the Executive Director for Communications at the Melrose Wakefield Healthcare, at Melrose Wakefield Healthcare, has told the community that they're evaluating options for Malden Hospital's land that will allow them to balance the delivery of medical care with potential community interest. Now, it has been the case that there was an inner-city survey that had identified interest in the community for the use of this land, and they go as follows. One, a multi-use natural grass open field. Two, a multi-use indoor community space. Three, connecting and memorializing the hospital through a walkway stairway that's very accessible. Number four, a natural children's playscape. And finally, number five, maximizing natural habitat preservation, not to mention the improved transportation that would follow from this development. Now, considering all those things, how can the city best work with the community and Melrose Wakefield Healthcare to realize these goals? I'm going to bring back Carrie McDonald to answer this question. All right, Carrie, would you need me to touch on that again, or are you good?
I think I got it. Can you just repeat the last part of your question?
Sure. How can the city best work with the community and Melrose Wakefield Healthcare to realize the goals of redeveloping the hospital land while also having community interests such as those that I've mentioned from the intercity survey?
Yeah, thank you. Another key issue for the city and especially for that neighborhood here at consistently when I've talked to voters who live near the hospital site. I think all of those things that you, that Melrose Wakefield Hospital has identified are really good uses of the space. So I do support this direction forward for the Malden Hospital site. And I know there's a lot of community support for those kinds of public uses of the site, allowing the medical uses to continue. And really to just get something done because it's been a question that's been hanging out there for a long, long time. So I think having this kind of constructive dialogue on the path forward is really important. Continuing to partner directly with Melrose Wakefield and facilitate some community design of the space and the property there is going to be really useful. I think a multi-use park is easy to have natural space and children's play space and some memorializing points, kind of like we do at the Waits Mount Park. I love the idea of some multi-use indoor space that community groups could use. We don't have enough community space. So again, not any kind of residential commercial usage, but you know, a rentable space for events and meetings. There's a great view from that property, you know, connections to the Felsmere Pond Park and its historic design, I think, would be really valuable. So there's a lot of great possibilities. The critical thing is that the city and the hospital are, have a clear and transparent path forward for the timeline, for discussions, decisions, and how the community can engage and just stay on it, really try to make some progress. I think we're very close to being able to finally realize a good future for that site. So I want to support that path forward.
Thank you. We're going to proceed with Craig Spatafor with the same question. All right. So the Melrose Wakefield Healthcare.
Oh, I got it. I definitely got it. So as a city councillor, this was one of the first votes I had to take was the first redevelopment promised by Homack Health from the Malden Hospital. I've been at many meetings. There's been four, I think, CEOs that have changed since Homack existence on that property, since I've been a councillor, and I believe Homack Health has been sold to Tufts. I've heard the same rumors, I've seen the same postings. What I have not seen is any plan in writing given to the city of Malden either through the mayor's office or the MRA Strategic Planning Department. What I've heard is words, and I'm sure councillor Matheson, or past councillor Matheson is going to say the same thing. The zoning right now is going back to single-family homes. As somebody who lives down the street from that and certainly understands the problems and challenges that neighborhood has, anything that goes in there needs the city of Malden's approval. There is already an immense amount of traffic from people cutting down, even Melrose residents cutting down the Fels Way, taking a right, excuse me, coming down Highland Ave, taking a right in the Fels Way and then cutting over to get to 93. So anything that goes up there is going to create more space. I do like the words they chose or the projects they chose. But I do know, working with them in the past, that everything comes with a caveat, meaning there also is some rumors of them putting up some type of medical facility up there. So until I see plans or a paper, I think everything is just nice wordsmithing. Certainly, the city deserves to have some outdoor space, some passive recreation, and that's the only thing I would really support up there at this point. If there is some type of medical use, I would be very interested in seeing where that sits. I would like to see their traffic plans, but community involvement goes through Malden and ends with Malden. And somebody who's been through this for many, many years, until I have a plan in place, it's nothing but Paul Mark wordsmithing us to give us what we want to know. Thank you, Guillermo.
Thank you, Craig Spatafor. I'm going to bring up Karen Cologne Hayes with the same question.
Hi.
Brian, the floor is yours.
Okay, so I'm a Ward 3 resident. I've been hearing about the plans and attending all the meetings for years and years about the hospital site. Also, since I decided to make a run for council, I've been taking many walks up there, chatting my husband's ear, who as an architect from just giving plan, trying to figure out, you know, what can we do here? But I also did hear on Amanda councillor, the Ward 4, Ward 3 councillor Amanda Linehan on a forum that was held here recently say that there is something in place, there's not too many. I don't know if it's a signed deal, but they have heard word that there will be no, you know, no building, no housing done on that site. So that is very, you know, that's a good thing to hear. I do understand the hesitancy from councillor Spatafor. We have heard a lot of different things going on up there. But that was a good thing to hear, and I trust that as councillor, she will hold strong to that. I also would like to see green space up there. That goes without saying, Malden needs more green space, no doubt about it. And if there is some kind of medical facility going up there, that's something I would like to see. We definitely need more of that. I think the pandemic showed that we could have used other facilities here for health, for like getting vaccines, for people getting checked. We had overcrowding in our hospitals. So that would be to me, you know, a really good use of that area. But also, like I said, keeping the green space. But I do understand that, you know, all green space, you know, we wouldn't have any revenue coming in. So you have to balance it and you have to use the surveys and you have to get community feedback. But then you have to listen to the community feedback so that you build trust there. So that's my answer to that.
Thank you very much. And now I'm going to bring up Brian Delacy with the same question.
Thank you very much.
Yours. Thank you very much, Guillermo. So this is a question that's near and dear to my heart. When I ran for the ward councillor in 2015, the central issue at the time was the Malden Hospital site. As some people may recall, it's in the record, it's in the newspapers, it's everywhere. And in fact, what happened as a result of that is that the city council added a ballot question after I had entered the race and made this a central issue related to the hospital site and acquisition of the land. It was very easy for the city council to put a ballot question on. And at first, the ballot question was to be only for Ward 3, and then through discussion, it was expanded to a citywide ballot question. The ballot question, it passed resoundingly, and here we are today in 2021. In the meantime, I was fortunate to be able to attend the week-long trial of the hospital owners versus the city of Malden. Fascinating experience. We don't want to go there again. I think the central element here is getting people together with citywide perspective and focus and doing the right thing for all the parties involved. It's simple, fundamental negotiating strategy. We can do it. We can do it with the residents' input and with the government that we have in place starting next year. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Brian. I'm going to bring up Roberto De Marco, same question regarding this hospital development. Hello there.
Oh, thank you very much. Once again, I had a client who made a proposal to the developers at many years ago to bring in open space, green space up there, to bring in a multi-use facility that would have continued to reduce traffic but allow passive uses. It didn't happen. There is nothing firm that I've seen. I've tracked this for many years. It continues to be an issue. We need to address the traffic concerns first, like councillor Spatafor brought up. That's going to be primary in any development that goes up there. It needs to be something that's going to respect the residents who surround that area. If it's going to be a medical facility, I would be urging that we seek to push for more of a behavioral health-focused medical center. We don't need necessarily ambulances and urgent care and that sort of thing. You know, when you deal with addiction issues or deal with mental health issues, behavioral issues, you're talking about teen talk groups, you're talking about passive green space outdoor issues. If they're going to go towards something that's a quieter use, a use that's going to have less traffic, then it's going to be able to respect the residents who are nearby. We need obviously to include a lot of green space. The city is going to have a hand in this from day one. If I'm a councillor, I will be encouraging a collaboration between the private and the public and seeking to make sure that we address the traffic concerns, we address the use. But if we're going to be bringing in medical, we're going to be bringing in any of these possible uses, then they need to be, we need to be thinking outside the box in how we design those uses to encourage a reduced impact on the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to proceed with John Matheson with the same question. All right, it's all yours.
All right. Thank you for the question. So this is an issue that has been around for quite some time. And I have heard a lot of different statements from the property owner over the years, many of which have turned out to be untruthful. So we might be just hearing some lip service now, but regardless, I have fought off a zoning change at the Malden Hospital site that would have allowed hundreds of apartments and tons of traffic that would not, just really would have crippled that neighborhood. And I did that over a period of many, many years and worked with the community and put the residents in charge. Now, I don't want to start deciding what is going to happen up there, but we do know from open space studies that we could use some more open space, and we know that people want some natural grass. We saw that over at Roosevelt Park in the group that meets over there. So we could put some open space up there, and I also think that some assisted living might fit there as well. We have that full nursing care center up there, Glen Ridge. It could be a nice step-down community that would not add a lot of traffic. So there's things we could do. But in short, I think Malden really needs to purchase this property and control its future. There's no better way to serve the community, and the last attempt to develop this property was completely contrary to the will of our community. I put that ballot question out there so that I could show the mayor and others that the community was dead set against that development. And many in and outside of government continued to pursue it. But this resource is too big and too important for wishful thinking. It's a gift from Mayor Converse to benefit the people of Malden, and it's our duty to ensure that it does. So I'm all for working with the property owner, but I also think we need to pursue a purchase and serve the community needs with this property. It's a great resource, and it's something that we just can't miss out on.
Thank you. And now we're going to proceed with question number, question number five. What do you think are the top three most pressing issues facing the city of Malden? And the candidate has the privilege of answering this first is Karen Cologne Hayes. What are the top three most pressing issues facing the city of Malden?
Sorry. Oh, there you go. Okay.
Oh, my apologies.
Right?
My apologies.
Okay. The top three would be, let's see, recovery from the pandemic, housing, and our racism, systemic racism. So I'll start with housing. I think, you know, obviously, everybody deserves a safe place to call home. And in order to preserve the beauty that Malden is and for our next generations, we have to make sure that they can afford to live here. So a while back, I was a part of the MAPC when they developed the Housing Needs Assessment Plan, and it was pretty clear where we were standing at that, and the goal was to get a better understanding of our housing needs and the demands in Malden. So I think that, you know, a couple of people here mentioned inclusionary zoning. I'd like to bring that up because we're now in a crisis over our housing, and that's because inclusionary zoning, you know, nine, 10 years ago, when I was helping Mass Senior Action Council put forth, they were, you know, going to the council, it was voted no by actually, you know, councillor Spatafor here and Matheson were currently on the council. So now we're in a crisis, which could have been avoided had we gone, you know, down that route. So the other would be the, let's see, so racial equity and equity in our, all around in our city. You know, we discussed a lot about language and the need to have language to, in order to have a diverse community and have people be included, language is the first step, right? And at City Hall, I do, I remember when the City Hall, the Building Committee, and I'm remembering when councillor O'Malley brought this up about signage. And what struck me most about that is that the, like, this is not a new issue, right? We've been a diverse city for forever, for so many years. So that should not have been something that was late to the game in planning. That should have been like on the forefront. And then, you know, we heard about maybe wanting to have a strategic plan that goes through the city, but like, how, that would have been the perfect place to start, right? A new City Hall.
My apologies to proceed, but thank you.
Okay.
Question? We're going to now proceed with Craig Spatafor.
Hear me?
Oh, yeah, I can hear you, and I'm going to.
You can hear me. Sorry, my mute button was stuck. So there you go. I think the three things facing the city is certainly the hangover from COVID, it's still not done. There's still a lot left to do. Infrastructure in general, probably our lead pipes and roadwork. It's such a big deal in lead pipes in the city of Malden that I was actually very proud. One of the best things I ever created was an ordinance several years ago that requires when you do a certain amount, anything over $30,000 in work in your home, or you sell it, you have to replace that lead pipe, but it's such a big deal. President Biden, I believe, estimated it would be $500 billion to replace all the lead lines in the United States, which is certainly not something in Malden, but certainly pretty prevalent in Malden. So that is, that's not just a city issue, it's a national issue. And then open space. Again, I hear that word, open space, and I heard about density, and then I hear we need more housing, we need more housing certainly, but not new buildings. And that's why I think the big, the big decision is. And we've done study after study, and the residents are overwhelmed by the amount of tall buildings we have, they're overwhelmed by the density we have, they're overwhelmed by the traffic they have. And just by building and building is not the right answer. We have to be smart, we have to encourage a lot of the older buildings to be adaptive. We got to work with the strategic department like they did with ABCD and getting security deposits so people get not only in apartments, but they can, they can afford to buy homes. We should take some of the homes that are in our housing stock that might have been in foreclosure. Really tough to find now because the economy is thriving and allow them to be owner-occupied so people can get wealth, but also put a deed restriction so they cannot be flipped and become a business transaction. So those are the three top issues. I do want to address Karen Cologne Hayes's comment about that document. The action inclusionary zoning was failed. The reason why it failed is because it went to the planning board, and there was no recommendations from the sponsor that year. It only came back now because the city spent $30,000 hiring an inclusionary expert, which presented his plan to the MRA at the time, to the planning board, which then voted it out, and then the city council supported it. So it only failed because there was, there was no ordinance is created. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we're going to proceed with Brian Delacy with the same question. All right, Brian, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Guillermo. So the three top things for me with some caveats. I actually think the number one thing is what the city is going to do with all the federal money, the tens of millions of dollars that has flowed into the city and more of it that's available through state and the governor's office. What's happening to that? This is a once-in-a-lifetime impact potentially, could change the playing field forever. What level of transparency, what level of involvement? We've talked about businesses, we've talked about residential involvement. What level of transparency, what level of involvement? We've talked about businesses, we've talked about residential involvement. We need more transparency and more engagement. Public safety just day in, day out. We've seen more violent crime. We know about that. There are real concerns in different corners of the city about access to fire safety. Uh when I'm out at night, I oftentimes see fire engines here, there and everywhere. This is a twenty-four hour day, seven day a week uh concern. I think we really need to look at how those resources have been planned and allocated to make sure that we're properly equipped for that. Uh the third one, uh just a side note on include on affordability of housing. No doubt about it, this is, you know, off the rails uh for people who have uh young. Uh younger people in their families. This is a frightening thought. I lived in Cambridge before moving to Malden. Uh about five years ago, I went to a zoning board meeting and called for affordable housing to be built into a seventy unit development. It it people didn't know what affordable housing was. I spoke with the mayor. I spoke with people at the state. Uh a big important part of what I think the city council needs to do is plan ahead, think ahead and take action before. It it's so urgent that people have to uh give up on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to proceed with Roberto DeMarco with the same question.
All right. Thank you Guillermo. The first three off the top of my head. Pandemic and recovery from the pandemic, which involves um stabilizing the mental health of our community, addressing those issues. Helping families uh bounce back from what was a once in a hundred year event. And changed our world and we have kids who are still struggling to find their roots. Whether it be in socialization, whether it be in school, whether it be in sports. We need to aid those families. Addiction is going up. Malden has great programs. Overcoming Addiction, an amazing program, and we need to support them. And to find a way to bring our families back from the edge of crisis that we've all experienced. Secondly, infrastructure. Infrastructure in our community has been deferred. We need to work on the infrastructure. We need to fix the streets. We need to fix the sidewalks. These are not just appearance issues. These are safety issues. And we need to make sure that we're setting ourselves up for what's going to come next. And by that, I mean the third issue. The economy is roaring right now. Everybody's feeling good about it. But we know the cycle. Economy changes. We need to be planning for the future. We need to be planning in terms of what types of jobs we're going to be promoting. We need to work with unions to to push trade jobs. We need to work with our our. Our tax base in order to make sure that we're prepared for what's coming next. We need to plan out our zoning so that. We know how to deal with the next phase of the economy that's coming and that involves housing as well. So the future of our economy is on its way. It we will be seeing two thousand eight again. In some fashion, and if we are not prepared for that, we will fail as leaders, our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna bring up John Matheson with the same question.
Thank you Guillermo. Uh Malden is a a very inclusive community. And very cohesive. I went to Public Safety Day that the police hosted and uh. Just a wonderful turnout of two thousand people. I would say safety is one of our highest issues. I began the uh the forum this way. I believe in fully funding our fire and our police. I do not believe that Malden has a systemic racism problem. I respectfully disagree with Karen Cologne Hayes about that. Um I would say traffic and parking is another very important issue that's near and dear to me and many of the residents. I think we need a new citywide parking audit so we can discover where parking spaces should be eliminated so they just don't work. And where we can add parking spaces and where we can help traffic move. The U S Department of Transportation has some tools that we haven't availed ourselves of yet. But if we did so, then we could actually improve things a little bit more. As for housing. Absolutely, we did. We missed the boat for many years on adding affordable housing with these market rate apartment buildings. I don't think we need any more of those buildings. I think we added maybe too much of that. What we do need is some creative options like co-ops uh or combination assisted living and independent living for seniors so that. They can age in place with dignity here in Malden without having to move. Uh perhaps with some memory care component added in there because we know that so many people are suffering from early Alzheimer's, just like my mom. Uh and so many others. Um and, you know, we did some great creative things in Malden in Ward Three. Uh we introduced the Cedar House where we took a rooming house and we made a co-op of autistic young adults who could then. Live and work together and share the responsibilities of maintaining a home together and staying gainfully employed. I think that's a beautiful thing and I think that there's a lot of opportunities for creative housing other than these market rate apartments that just. We don't need any more of in the future because of our density. But I think those are the uh issues right there, I think. Creative housing. Uh public safety, very, very important, traffic and parking. Thank you very much.
And thank you. We're going to proceed with Carrie McDonald, same question. All right, Carrie, it's yours.
I just wanted to first say that racism is one hundred percent a concern that needs to be at the center of. The focus of leaders across this diverse city. So I just want to say that. The three things I would name, one hundred percent pandemic response, it's gotta be the North Star, continue to be the North Star. I mean. We're not out of the woods yet and families are still in crisis needing help with addiction services and homelessness and food and. Our community partnerships need more investment. So that's number one. And at the same time. We are at such risk from climate change right now. And, you know, again, we saw it this week. I don't know if you've seen the maps, but most of the city south of Salem Street is at risk for flooding in a category two hurricane. And this is only going to get worse in the years to come. Heavy rains are flooding backyards right now from the runoff. We have. Air quality and heat island challenges in our city, so we have to create a citywide climate action plan, again, like many of our neighboring cities have. That would have three components. One, coordinate our natural and green space work. Falling up on the twenty seventeen Open Space and Recreation Plan, figure out where we are on implementation there. Uh taking care of our trees, planting new trees. That's one way we can add to the air quality. Uh and look for new opportunities like the Malden Hospital site to expand green space access. Second, energy efficiency. That's projects that could include electric car charging stations, citywide uh home energy programs. Aggregate renewable energy purchasing from the city, uh energy usage goals for cities, facilities, building codes, a lot more. And then climate focused infrastructure will invest in resilience projects to protect our community from natural disasters. Like the munis- like the Malden River Works Project. Uh that's a great one and needs to be a priority at the Department of Public Works Yard. Um we've done this municipal vulnerability preparedness study and we need to follow up on it. So these can't wait. We're already years behind. Third issue I would say is just streets, sidewalks, uh clearing the backlog of repair. It's the number one thing we hear from folks. Uh it is a safety and accessibility issue and we have to have a systemic plan for how we're going to get there.
Thank you. Now we're going to proceed with the next question. Uh question number six. Uh Malden Center has undergone transformation in terms of new development with buildings, new businesses, and especially a new city hall. Is almost a given that potentially an influx of new residents or foot traffic will be coming to the city. What do you see as the positives of these new developments and the changes that would follow? What are the challenges that you see that all this transformation can bring? And in your opinion, what are the best ways to meet these challenges? And the uh I'm going to bring up Craig Spatafora to bring up, uh to go ahead and answer those questions. Hello there.
Thank you Guama. Uh a great question and this is one of those things I think that um. The council can take a bow towards along with the mayor. This this is not a, this project was something that's been going on for many years. Uh and I am proud to be part of the City Hall Building Committee. Uh and this was something that uh, like I said, there was multiple plans to do this. And this is really a journey. Uh I I think the 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 outcomes is is pretty uh easy to understand. If the more foot traffic you have. Uh the more small businesses we have and not only just the small, the new small businesses, but certainly the ones uh that have been down there in some cases for decades. Uh we found, they finally get some relief there. Uh that comes with new opportunities, new residents, meeting people in social uh aspects as well as. Creating more tax revenue. I mean, that's how uh we now have the ability to have uh, we have the mail's tax that we've been using. We have a Starbucks there now where. I know a lot of people that sit in either side of the city either go to Med Fit or Melrose for that, but that tax revenue is very important for all our shared dreams and goals. Uh but with that influx of whether it be additional residents uh and certainly additional foot traffic. Uh there will be uh vehicular traffic as well. As much as we uh say that we would love to to use the train. Uh we do know that that there will be additional vehicular traffic. I think we have, we've done a a pretty good job in term. Terms of creating the own parking department. Uh that comes, that has come with better enforcement. That's good for some and bad for others. We have downtown parking meetings now. Uh where we we don't have commuters coming in and parking in our square. We're allowing merchants to have um customers come down now and 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 visit those those. Those restaurants and small shops and 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 spend money and have a place to park. Um so I think the challenge there will be really, how do you balance the growth of additional motor vehicle traffic? And the impact not only in the square, but those neighborhoods around there. Ward two and Ward four already see. Um the tidal wave of residents that may live in the square but don't want to pay for those parking. They park down in those those areas because there's no citywide parking. So I think with every good development comes uh people and that's what you want, but it's going to have an increase in traffic.
Thank you. I'm gonna bring up. Brian DeLacy. There you go.
Thanks Guillermo. Uh there's no doubt that that downtown area has changed in really remarkable ways. Uh I I was in the old City Hall, must have been one of the last meetings that we had and I'm certain I have almost one of the last photos taken. Of those beautiful flags and the old brick building uh from the third floor looking down. With that said, there has been a lot of change. Uh we actually started a little social media group, Malden After Dark around the time that. Uh as as restaurants and uh nightlife sort of started to emerge. And and the group has gone in a slightly different direction, but that's because it was sort of uh detoured by the pandemic. So a lot has changed. There's a lot of opportunity. One idea that I had put forward was that. And I spoke with a person today actually, uh who was a senior and who commented on how it's difficult to get to the senior center. Uh the bus uh route is is unfavorable, parking is next to nonexistent or difficult. And most recently, there have been conflicts essentially between the different user groups of seniors and teens, given the. Uh the demise of the Teen Enrichment Center, which my own children benefited from. So I think there's tremendous opportunity. I actually would like to see potentially as an idea, the Markey Senior Center. Uh be can be essentially put on the block and sold and potentially that kind of an environment could move to Hospital Hill. With more green space that might be more appealing and there's already a bus route that goes there. So. I do think there's just tremendous opportunity in the downtown area and I love walking it myself. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And now we're gonna. Bring up Roberto DeMarco, same question.
Guillermo, could you repeat the specific question, please?
I can. Malden Center has undergone a transformation in terms of new development, new buildings and businesses, not to mention the new city hall. With all this development, there will be an influx of new residents, but most importantly, foot traffic to the new businesses as well as the city. What do you see as the positives of all these new developments and what change do you see being posed as challenges? Following from this transformation and all that it can bring. And in your opinion, what are the best ways to meet these challenges?
Thank you. So I have a business here in Malden Square. I am a business owner. I've experienced the. Influx of traffic residents firsthand. It is challenging. The traffic makes it difficult to get down here uh from my home in Maplewood. To Malden Square on a daily basis and I face that challenge and think about my clients facing that challenge. The influx of people has been beneficial to the businesses. I come down here with my my wife and my family during the nightlife. We we love seeing how active and alive Malden Square has become. So that is positive. The to meet the challenges of traffic, we need to have a citywide parking. Plan. We need to have a citywide traffic plan. We need to uh uh deal with. The um the attempts and and I was against this. To take over lanes of active roadway for bus and bikes. I'm a big proponent of the bike paths that are on the train tracks. I am not a big proponent of the bike paths that are on city streets. They are creating more congestion in many ways and I don't think that they were implemented with. A clear understanding of what was going on. We used traffic studies from four years ago to implement. Current changes to traffic today. So we need to go back to the drawing board and. Put together our research, our background. We need to come up with uh plans based upon today's knowledge. Not looking back. And as far as the businesses go, we need to encourage downtown activities. The s- the summer programs and the fairs were awesome. They helped to enliven things and to rebuild after the pandemic. So. I am a big uh promoter of those. As a business owner here, I love seeing the foot traffic. But obviously, we have uh challenges to go with that. I see my time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna proceed with Karen Hayes. I'm gonna bring her on. Uh Karen Cologne Hayes.
All right, took a minute there.
Well, good.
Took a minute. Yeah, we're good. Um I just wanted to quickly um go back to something that was said. Um Counselor Spatafora. Um I just wanted to address the um. The inclusionary zoning, um that it should not have taken five more additional years um to get that passed. Um when it first came before twenty sixteen. So um that's on them. And then also to uh the uh. Counselor Matheson um that, you know, there is a systemic racism problem. Across the United States. Um the mayor also had um. Called, you know, it is Unite Twenty Twenty um uh from Malden had said that racism. Um is a public health issue. So I think that shows a a real disconnect um with the people of Malden. Um so for the question, um I just want to say that the uh, I love the downtown. I I love that whole new development. Um you know, I'm I'm a city girl, so I think that um all of the foot traffic down there um. Also helps with safety. I know sometimes people feel like if there's a lot of people around, um I don't know, it 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 could cause problems with with. Safety, but I really, I feel when you see a lot of people around, you're more safe. You know, somebody's not going to really try and do something when there's um people up and down the streets. I've heard from the um business owners how um especially with um, yes, some of the new businesses that. You know, having people and opening up um city hall, people coming from the train. I know we talk the train all the time um. And you can see now what's downtown. So that was like the perfect move. It really is driving people down to our businesses. I wish that um we can make other squares, you know, throughout Malden have the same kind of thriving. Um we start here. You know, get some good feedback and then um, you know, move it to the different parts of the square. But I think that it's a um, to me, it's it. It is really helping Malden thrive.
Thank you. I'm now going to bring up Carrie McDonald, same question. All right, floor is yours.
I think Pleasant Street is building such a sense of place in the city. And people love the restaurants and businesses that are there. It's what made those summer festivals that the city hosted in partnership such a success. I love those. I want to make sure we're able to do those again and they were great for our businesses. Uh it's a great entry point for the city and an economic driver for the community. So. Um I think there's more opportunities there too, you know, opportunities to build on our, like our gaming based businesses like Boda Borg and our board game cafes. Um so there are a couple of challenges, yes. I, there's always going to be more demand for traffic. There are always more cars. And so one of the key things to making the square thrive for the long term is to make it easier to get there without cars. That will help limit traffic demand. Forty percent of people in Malden don't have a car and people outside of Malden coming to the square can take the tea. I think we need to make sure that we keep multi-function uses for the square. So we've got people there at all different hours of the day. You know, the senior center and I I really want to have some deep conversation with the folks in the senior center and the teens who are there now and say. What's the long-term plan that's going to work for everyone? I I know there's some benefits to being with each other right now, but. We really need to do some deep listening to whether that's the long-term solution. So my kid goes to daycare right in Malden Center. Um sometimes you see those preschoolers walking around with like the little yellow, you know, lines and vests and it's it's adorable and. Um and I love that. I'm also going to tell you that that park, I very thankful for the park that's right around the corner there that we finally have a little bit of green space downtown. We we really lack green space and trees. Is there regularly needles in that park? So we have a substance abuse. Um, you know, challenge specifically in the square. And I think we need more services and plans to address it because it is creating serious safety issues. You know, the teachers have to go sweep the park for needles before. My preschooler can go there and we need to address that kind of um, that kind of uh challenge for serious safety in the square.
Thank you, Carrie, for sharing that. I'm gonna bring up John Matheson with the same. I'm gonna bring up John Matheson with the same question.
Great, thank you very much. I was proud to be a part of the revitalization of the square over all these and all the work that went into that, moving the city hall, police station, opening up Pleasant Street, all wonderful stuff. We still have more work to do. We have office space that remains unfilled, such as the Bank of America Building. We have the National Grid site. We have the opportunity presented by the T Station. I was also proud to be a part of the $1 million construction of the Northern Strand Trail. That's multimodal, especially beneficial to the the bike path that goes through. You know, there's a lot of people biking in Malden. I think that's great. But we need to be cognizant, and I think Roberto DiMarco really nailed it on this one. He gave the best answer of all the candidates thus far. And it comes straight from someone who knows the square, who works in the square for many years, as I do. We need to be cognizant of everyone's ability to use these roadways, not just the walkers and the bikers. All 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 the different ways, the buses, the T. But also you don't want to lose your parking spaces because that's a way to cripple the square. That's a challenge. Traffic is also a challenge. We need to work on all of these issues, take a holistic approach to the entire thing. I think the greatest challenge to the square is the congestion. If we manage it just right and we do it in a way that's inclusive and bring all the stakeholders together, give the community a voice. I know we can do it right, but the answer is not just to bump out sidewalks and eliminate parking and make it more difficult to drive. I think Mr. McDonald missed the mark on that one slightly. The square is a great opportunity. We're headed in the right direction. I have a lot of confidence that we're gonna be able to do this just right. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now gonna start our last question before we have closing statements. So it is a surprise to no one, especially those who've seen the other word forums, that this question may come about. Slogans like defund the police and the people's budget are becoming synonymous with lowering or reallocating police departments funding for the purposes of allocating them for other reasons, purposes, some extending to mental health to just being in the town coffers itself. What are your general stance on public safety and police funding in the city of Malden? I'm gonna bring up Brian DeLacy to answer that question first.
Yeah, thanks for starting with me on on this easy question. It's a really critical question and 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 it's a difficult question to to address. Coincidentally, late yesterday, somebody posed that question on my campaign Facebook page. And I thought about it and and I wrote a response. And so I I will, and I've heard at least some of the previous forum responses. And and but I really actually only heard those after I penciled in my own response. So here's my response. As I believe Chief Chief Malice has said, we're partners in making our city safe. We all play a part. Public safety is a cornerstone of our city. I'll abbreviate what I wrote. It was fairly lengthy. Personally, I've been doing my part for a number of years. That's included areas around public safety and crosswalks and public safety related to policing of speeding and public safety in in a number of different areas. I actually posted a video back in March 2016 of Chief Malice giving an hour plus long presentation to the Public Safety Committee. Probably perhaps, I'm certainly the only person I know who's ever recorded and published that, emphasizing the importance of public safety throughout the city. And I think, as we know, as we talked about, violent crime has become more important. Speeding becomes almost more rampant. It seems like the pandemic has raised the 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 threshold of people to just go as fast as they could. So without going into it, my site details it, but I'm certainly supportive of the resources that are in place and more. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna bring up Roberto DiMarco, same question regarding the funding of the Malden Police Department, as well as the slogans that I'd mentioned.
Let's be very clear from the get go. We do not defund the police. Malden's Police Department, we are blessed because we have a police department that is interactive with the community, supportive of the community. I do have a bias. I come from family members who are past, present, and very much certain that it'll be future police officers in this city. The Police Department in Malden does not have the issues impacting it that other places around the country have. My daughter walked with the Black Lives Matter, my daughter and wife. The Police Department was there walking with them. Chief Malice has constantly supported the community, and his officers have done so as well. I every interaction I've had, and I've had them with variety of situations for clients and family members have been positive. So we do, we do not defund. Chief Malice also has a plan in place, as I understand it, to allow for mental health professionals to travel with police. He's working towards that. I think it's great. I think the resources Malden has in terms of those programs are are cutting edge, and we need more of it. We do need the mental health professionals to be present when there are mental health crises. But we need them to be present in a safe manner so that officers can control what could devolve into dangerous situations. So first and foremost, there is, there are very, very knowledgeable professionals who are working hard for that. Slogans don't do justice to programs. They get misinterpreted all the time. In this situation, defund the police is the wrong way to go about this. What we need to be talking about is working with police departments to address community issues. And so I'm I'm not in favor of the people's budget. I'm not in favor of the defund the police. I am in favor of working collaboratively with the different professionals to create programs that works here in Malden. And so we need to keep a keep a hold on what's working and encourage that. That way, we don't fall into the problems other communities are facing. So I'm I'm very much clear on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. I am now gonna bring up John Matheson with the same question. Floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Guillermo. Firstly, I want to say thank you to the police for the work they do. Most of us have jobs that does not expose us to personal risk. They do. They are essential employees. Without our laws and the police who enforce them, our society simply could not function. Businesses would be at risk and no one would feel safe. We saw glimpses when police lost their powers, when those were taken away. And there was a lot of ugliness that followed. Police were the focus of hate and disrespect, and it was very disturbing to watch. Many politicians refused to condemn attacks on police until eventually there were attempts to kill them. And I'm gonna tell you, Malden has a excellent police department, and I'm very proud of them. When there was a bank robbery in Melrose, they made the mistake of using Malden as their escape route, and our guys caught him. I was very proud. As a result of defund the police, which is one of the most unintelligent policy demands of all time, crime has skyrocketed in this country. Twenty one thousand five hundred murders, more than all the countries of Europe combined. It is insane. And I think that we need to remember now that these politicians need our support to win their local elections. They're running away from those terms. But we need to remember how selfish they were and how far they were willing to go to put us all at risk because it was politically fashionable for them to say, defund the police. Well, not in Malden. I am going to support the police all day long because I think that they do a tremendous job. I don't want to reimagine the police. I don't want to reinvent government. I want to thank them for the work they do, and I want them to know that I support them, just like many members of our community. Thank you, Guillermo.
Thank you. And now I'm gonna bring up Carrie McDonald, same question. All right, Carrie, the floor is yours.
Thanks, Guillermo. I joined Mayor Christian's Advisory Group on Policing Policies, which did a massive public survey to get people's opinions and talk to the Malden Police Officers. And I think there's a path forward for Malden because the survey showed such broad, deep community support for the recommendations that are common sense. I've been clear throughout my campaign about what our community needs and what I support, which is alternatives to noncriminal emergency calls, crisis response and relationship and transparency with the Malden Police Department. These have broad public support in Malden. I'm open to lots of different ways to get there. I'm not running a campaign, and I have no goal to just cut a police budget, as I don't think any candidates do. As an executive, I know you have to give people the resources they need to do their job. And Malden Police and all city departments do deserve that. I am out to wait if I am out to find ways to make critical investments in safety and crisis response that we need and that have broad support. And so sadly, these discussions on critical safety issues have been hyper politicized. The negative approach of running your campaign against a hashtag is a scare tactic that is dividing our community for political gain to avoid talking about the underlying issues. And those are about safety and yes, about justice and inclusion. And frankly, the silence from some of the people on this stage about those issues in this diverse community speaks volumes. I am not running a hashtag campaign of any kind. I respect and honor the work that our officers do on behalf of the community, as I do for all our first responders and public servants. I appreciate that Malden Police leaders work hard to be a positive presence in our community and are very open to conversation. As a city councillor, I want to work with every part of our community, including those who have not had a seat at the table, those who are most impacted, and those who may disagree with me. I'm open to lots of different ways to fund the critical investments we need. And for the last year, I've been working and volunteering hard to build the pathways forward on community safety that will serve all Maldonians. Thank you.
Thank you. And now I'm gonna bring up bring up Karen Cologne Hayes. All right, the floor is yours, Karen.
Thank you. First, I'd like to also say that using slogans or using defense, you know, defund the police and trying to put words in other people's mouth is that is divisive and it's fear mongering. And our people in Malden are smarter than that, and they know that. So I just want to say that right out out of the gate. I support our police department. And after talking to Chief Mullis and as well as many other members on the on the force, it is clear that social work and mental health experts are needed to respond to homelessness, mental health, domestic disputes and substance abuse and more. By expanding programs like the one we already have with Elliot Services, I believe that was spearheaded by Counselor Crowe, and it seems to be working. We will take the burden off of our police so that they can devote their focus to safeguarding our community from violence and more serious criminal activity. This includes focusing on development resources for our public safety sector, so they have adequate resources to respond to mental health substance abuse emergencies. I also was working with community members right now on the Advisory Group for Obama's Pledge, supported by Chief Mullis and Mayor Christensen on reviewing our use of force policies to make sure that they're safe for everyone. This group has been meeting and reviewing the policies, and we should be coming out very soon with the results of our survey that was taken to to get community feedback, which is always helpful. So we need to just put this at rest. You know, let's just talk about the policies and talk about things that you want to do for Malden instead of trying to put words in other people's mouths. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Craig Spatafora. All right, proceed.
Thank you, Guillermo. I will be abundantly clear. I am not for defunding the police. I am not for defunding the schools. I am not for defunding any of our public service needs right now, our city hall workers. What I do find very funny here is the words hashtag being used. I am actually using Mr. McDonald's actual words that he posted on social media numerous times that said, defund the police. And his in the people's budget, which he was very proud to use during that very, very bad time in America, identified a $400,000 savings by not filling in police offices. So you can use whatever word you want to use by not filling in police officers. You're cutting essentially their budget. And I I'm sure every candidate on here understands that we have a balanced budget requirement. So that if you're gonna, if you're gonna fund additional services, you need to cut from from within the budget. Unless we're gonna talk about raising property taxes. So when I use the word defund the police, Mr. McDonald, I actually use your own terms. If you want to turn away from that, that's fine. The people's budget was very clear. It was a $400,000 cut. I am not for cutting those services. In fact, I would give them more money. Now let's talk about policy. I completely agree, the Obama initiatives, and so does the Malden Police, less lethal force. They're already doing that. A great community starts with a with a with a with a safe community. And the idea that that both candidates, because Karen Cologne Hayes also publicly said to take out the school resource officer. If if she's ever met this individual, he's he done wonders for the schools and all the individuals out there. So these are words that I just repeated. The idea that we attacked the Malden Police for no other reason, because it was popular, was demoralizing the police force. And as somebody who was endorsed by the the not only the Superior's Officer Union, but the Patrolman Union. And I've never been endorsed by either of them in my past career. So it is very, very clear. I am not for defunding the police. I'm not using trickery, and I'm not using fancy words. I'm using your words.
I thank you, Mr. Spatafora. We are going to proceed with closing statements, and I'm gonna bring Counselor Spatafora right back. He's gonna start us off with our closing statements. All right, welcome back. No, not yet. I asked you to unmute.
Can you hear me now? Sorry, stick of the air. First of all, Graham, I want to thank you and Malden Access, I keep on calling them Malden Access TV, excuse me, Uma, for this platform. I want to thank all the candidates for taking time out of their day and certainly all the citizens. I want to thank my family for supporting me during this campaign, as well as my son for allowing me to participate on his 14th birthday. To all those watching on TV and online, I also want to thank you for participating in city government. As a city council, and we cannot do this alone. I think we've we have accomplished a lot in the past few years. Through hard work, unprecedented partnership and a shared vision, the city of Malden is on course for a better tomorrow for everybody who lives here, who works here or chooses to live here in the city of Malden. Yet, as I reflect, I am reminded of words that my grandfather used to tell me all the time by Will Rogers, who said, even if you're on the right track, you still need, you still can get run over if you just sit there. And that's what Malden is not doing. We are just not sitting there. We have past ordinances for lead lines. We've already had energy efficiency committees. We replaced all the all the LED lights in the city of Malden. We're doing a lot of those things. Can we do it faster? Absolutely. We can do it, but we are not sitting there and we are not resting on our laurels. Malden is is alive and well. And the reality is before us, while we celebrated certainly a decade of achievement for the city of Malden, we cannot rest on what we we've done going forward. I will continue to match the determination to ensure that everybody gets the benefit of a brighter future, and we all laid the foundation for. It's with those residents in mind that inspire me and with through strength and resolve. You know, I was asked on the campaign trail, I met a woman named Frances and a husband named Solo Kadat, who arrived here in Malden with hideous kids, who are now parents and want to have the same, if not more opportunities for their children, and they're passing that legacy on to their kids because Malden is that type of city. I come to work every day, every day motivated by stories like that, both my friends and my neighbors. Our residents deserve a city government that works hard for them and dreams as big as they do. The city deserves, the city also is required to be careful with the dollar as much as our families are. They deserve in a place that sets the stage for them to succeed. And as we enter a new a new area and a new realm, I pledge that to our residents. We will not be run over by our challenges. We will, we will continue to act and ready to adapt. So with that, I want to say, as I strive every day to fulfill our shared vision for Malden, I want to continue to make Malden a great city. Thank you. God bless America and God bless Malden.
Thank you, Craig. And we're gonna proceed with Carrie McDonald with his closing statements. All right, Carrie. Let me ask you to unmute. All right, the floor is yours, Carrie.
Thank you. Just before my closing statement, since I was named, I just want to respond to Counselor Spatafora, who thank you. And I want to say, so Counselor Spatafora said in an editorial just a month or so ago that, you know, call it what you want, if you are cutting the police budget, then that counts as defunding the police. Well, I want to say the two count, the two folks on this stage who have actually voted by that standard to defund the police are Counselors Spatafora and Matheson. In 2016, a budget amendment sponsored by Counselor Kinnon specifically cut the police budget by $230,000, mostly from overtime and other places, and they both voted for it. So, you know, to say that this is a new idea, that's based in actions that the council has taken in the past. And I'm sure there were good reasons for that vote. But my point is that we've politicized what has been normal discussions about budgets in the past. I have, as I said, supported investments in alternative crisis response. And I am saying that I'm open to lots of different ways to get there. That was one suggestion, but I'm open to lots of different ways to fund it. But I want to be clear. But I want to be clear about who's been on the record. So I want to thank UMA again, and also all of the folks who contributed questions to this event. It's been such a great opportunity to talk with you all about these wide-ranging topics that do affect every part of our community. I want to thank everyone who's volunteered and supported our campaign. It means so much to have your trust and your confidence. Thank you to everybody who's getting involved in local elections. There's so much that our city has the power to do. I love going out and talking to people. It's been such a privilege in this campaign to talk to so many in this community, to hear your hopes and your dreams, your frustrations and your fears, standing on your doorstep or listening on the phone. So many people have thanked me for running, noting that it's, it is a good time to have fresh perspectives when we've got some folks leading the council. And glad that I bring the experience to be able to hit the ground running on day one. I decided to run for councillor-at-large to bring a spirit of possibility and partnership to city council. I'm again focused on three points: basic city services like streets and sidewalks, empowering and including community voices from every neighborhood and every background, and addressing citywide challenges with action for climate, for the climate crisis, for our cost of housing, for community safety and public health, and for education and economic opportunity. I'm proud to be endorsed by the Greater Boston Labor Council and Laborers Local 22, by the Environmental League of Massachusetts and the Sierra Club, and by many, many of my friends and neighbors in Malden. And I would love to hear from you. This campaign isn't about me. It's about us. You can contact me by email at carrie@mcdonaldformalden.com or by phone at 781-627-5506, and tell me what your hopes are for the city for the years to come. I hope you'll visit my website at mcdonaldformalden.com to learn more about my campaign, where you can also download translated materials in Chinese, Vietnamese, Spanish, Portuguese, Haitian Creole, and Arabic. Again, Carrie McDonald, and I ask for one of your three votes for Malden City Council-at-large on November 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. And now I'm going to bring up John Matheson for his closing statement. All right, John, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Guillermo. And I want to thank all the candidates, not only for participating, but for running. That gives the voters choice. It gives them the ability to get their issues to light. Before I go any further with my closing, though, I'd like to respond to Mr. McDonald, who, you know, I don't know you very well, but I do like you. I just need to correct you. I think that you came from a place of naivete here because when you referenced myself and Councillor Spatafora reducing the $200,000 of police overtime, it wasn't to take it away from the police. It was so that after they exhausted their initial overtime, they could come back. We could have a discussion as a community about how they were policing and which additional overtime dollars they needed and how it was going to be directed. It was so that we could be more involved with the policing, and the police were so happy to participate that way. And the community was grateful that we did it. We did not take $1 away from the police. So you really made a false accusation there, and I'm sure that that's something you will say again. But I'll go on with my closing now to say, again, thank you to UMA, and thank you, Guillermo, and thank you to all the voters for their support over the many years that I've been running, and particularly this year. We've accomplished so many great things together. As I have stated in my opening, the new police station, which I was happy to be a part of as council president at the time, the new city hall, the reopening of Pleasant Street, the new roads, more revitalized square, the energy efficiency improvements that we did. We have so much accomplished. But our work is not done, and our city needs us now. I'll be a source of stability and experience in the council. As a lifelong resident and a local business owner who attended the Malden Public Schools, grew up in this city, and has served in the council, I knew that, I know this community. And through my four terms in the council, I have remained independent of these different political pressures. I let the residents lead. And that is not always easy. But I was your tireless councillor and advocate then, and I will be that councillor for you again. I have complete and total respect for our police and fire, our veterans, and our flag, and our city and its leaders. I need your help in asking all of our Malden friends and neighbors for their vote next Tuesday. And in return, you will have my commitment to bring steady leadership that will get us back on track. Thank you all very much, and, and thank you, Guillermo. Good night.
Thank you. And we're gonna bring up Roberto DiMarco. Actually, no, wait, my apologies, Roberto. I'm going to be bringing up Karen Cologne Hayes. You're next. All right, here we go. Here we go. My apologies, Karen.
Okay, thank you. Before I start my closing, I'm just going to address what Matheson, John Matheson just said. So the council has voted to reduce the police funding a number of times. And so especially when, what Carrie McDonald just brought up, who is in no way a naive person. So that has been done. We looked it up, and I just wanted to say that, you know, it's like spinning the words. And what, what you were trying to do are words. So I understand it can be bothersome and frustrating when people do that, but it's the truth. And also, the fact that, you know, our councillors here now who have served and served us well for years, but it's, they're disconnected with our community. And that is what I've been hearing across Malden. So in closing, I would just like to thank UMA for hosting tonight and other candidates for allowing our residents to watch and learn about their choice on November 2nd. The choice is clear. We don't have any time to waste, and there's a disconnect between some of my opponents and our community. Racism is real. Climate change is real, and we only have five years to build back better with our funding. We have to get this right. We got to get it right now and with good planning. With my proven track record of listening to the people, understanding the issues, and creating sustainable solutions, I will work with all stakeholders to develop a long-term plan that ensures we all rise together. By forming local coalitions, we can work on a three-pronged approach to stabilize our community, strategize on how to dispense the funding, and prioritize for our future. We must be sure to make the most of this one-time funding. I'm the only woman running for at-large, and I'm the only candidate that has both insider and outsider perspectives when it comes to city hall operations. I know how our city operates in city hall, and I will hit the ground running. Over the past nine years, I have developed close relationships with nonprofit organizations, Malden Public Schools, and our diverse community groups. During times when budgets are tight, I will utilize our partnerships. Malden is, as I said before, a city rich in resources, but systems poor. People don't know how to access them. I will bridge this gap. I am running because I want to be and make Malden a more inclusive, stronger Malden, where nobody is left behind. A Malden where we raise up all voices and everyone has a seat at the table. I would be honored if you would consider giving me one of your three votes for councillor-at-large. Thank you very much. See you at the polls November 2nd.
Thank you very much, Karen. And I'm now going to bring Roberto DiMarco for his closing statements. All right, Roberto, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Guillermo. Thank you, UMA, and thank you, candidates. I am energized to see the collaboration and innovation that we have done, that has shaped Malden as it is today, and that I have done in my own law practice for the past 18 years. We still need to recover from the pandemic. We need to help families, assist youth and children that are still struggling in school, address mental health challenges that have only gotten worse through the pandemic. We need to address addiction. We need to support our families, and that means supporting teachers as well as the first line of response to families in need. Additionally, I am looking at new opportunities that collaborations between government and private business can bring to our city, especially in generating new jobs, opportunities for job training, working with unions as a first line of, of, of training, working with our developers, like the development that's going on across from the BB School, where we brought in first-time homebuyer programs, brought in owner-occupied programs through different types of housing. And we need to expand senior accessibility for seniors to the services in the city. We need to make sure that our seniors feel safety, not just physical safety, but food safety, financial safety, medicinal safety. Seniors deserve our attention immediately. They are also suffering after the pandemic from being isolated. And while I feel I have great ideas, I believe that I've trained for this position my entire professional life. A public servant is just that, a public servant. We serve the public. And this means listening and paying attention to the residents of every ward, of every sector, of every ethnicity, nationality, gender, sexual orientation, religion. It doesn't matter where you were born or what your last name is. It matters that you are a resident of Malden, and we welcome you. Our agenda for the future of Malden also needs to come from you. God granted us two ears and one mouth. We need to listen twice as much as we talk, and politicians talk a little bit too much. I'm Roberto DiMarco, and I'm seeking your vote for councillor-at-large so that together we can build an agenda that is for all Maldonians. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, we're going to proceed with Brian Delacy with his closing statement.
Thank you, Guillermo, and thank you for UMA's participation and for all of the candidates. As anyone knows who's run for office, it's, it's time-consuming, it can be exhausting, and it really and truly is a team sport. So for that, I deeply thank family, friends, volunteers, people who have kind of played along, and certainly thank the voters, the people who are seriously considering the candidates before them. Some years ago, myself and a small group of other people actually established bootcamps for new candidates because having run for office in 2015, I realized the complexities, how to navigate the systems. And it's just kind of thrilling to see the number of contested elections this year unlike any previous one in recent memory. And, and my hope is that we all can participate more in the future. This was my, my so-called palm card that is, is something that, you know, it's challenging to consolidate onto a six-by-nine piece of paper, sort of who you are and what you mean. I'm really proud of both sides of the card. On the back, you'll see groups of people who assembled to, to address various issues in and around the environment and, and things of just general shared support. It's a group thing, and it's wonderful when people can participate. So in closing, over the years, especially since 2015, I've been pretty involved in the community. I helped establish, co-founded Malden News Network. We've published many articles. The idea was to dig into what really is happening in the city. That's involved research and public records. Along the way, I focused on open meeting law, which is a way to get more information out and to get the residents involved in participating. I was on a superintendent's search committee. I was a very active member of the Open Space and Recreation Plan that people have referred to here, and I've been an, an author and initiator on multiple Community Preservation Act projects. The three pillars of my campaign are simple but strong, I think. One is democracy in action, one is integrity in government, and one is working to make Malden better for all of us. These are spelled out in pretty good detail on my website and on my Facebook page. And I hope that people have time to, to consider this. My activities, I believe, have helped to do things like identify glaring gaps in tax payments where absentee landlords were claiming owner-occupied residential exemptions. Over 200 were identified. That adds up to around a half million dollars a year that seem to be taxed in the wrong way. I, I, I work to draw early attention to the public hazards of vaping in elementary schools, as shocking as that may be. That led to signage in the schools and around the parks. Opioid addiction is a big thing. Respect for all people of all cultures and all languages. Integrity in government has involved open meeting law, public records law, and the shade tree law. Certainly, the city was cutting down trees in, in, in ways that they shouldn't have been. Fortunately, that has improved. I'm out to make Malden better for all of us. I'm out to look out for the kids, the ones who don't vote. Roosevelt Park still is fenced in with a toxic area of perhaps almost as much as an acre of open space. It's been like that for two years. The time is up. We need to act. We need to move forward. So I do humbly ask for your vote, Brian Delacy, on November 2nd. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. So I would like to thank all the candidates who attended tonight. I'd like to thank you at home for tuning in to watch this forum. Tonight, we featured the at-large candidates for the city of Malden. And most importantly, please make a plan to vote on Tuesday, November 2nd, to exercise your conscience and to vote your candidates. And before we proceed, I'm going to proceed to let the cat out of the bag that this will be my last debate of the season, forum of the season, because unfortunately, I'm no longer going to be working at Urban Media Arts at the end of this forum. I am privileged enough to have spent my time here at MATV, now Urban Media Arts, since April 4th, 2016. And it was almost more than the five years that I've been in this world. I really greatly appreciate the city of Malden for allowing me, initially somebody from Somerville, now living in Arlington, to be a part of your city, to be a part of your happenings, your community programming, your government access, and ultimately allowing me to develop in front of your eyes. I'd like to thank each and every one of you, my coworkers, the public, the city at large, for offering me this opportunity to help moderate these forums, to provide your government access programming is a privilege. And I wish you all the best. And the best way to show us all a helping hand here is to vote, exercise your conscience, and to spread the word. Please stay tuned, and when you're interested, please volunteer at Urban Media Art, urbanmediaarts@145pleasanestreet. And remember to raise the volume and to get involved. Thank you.